Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. Sorry they turned the music off early, but they did. Okay. City Clerk.
City Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Mann.
I am present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And who's doing the invocation? Daryl, you're up.
Father, we thank you. Huh? I'm, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm so glad you made it back to Lancaster alive.
Thank you. I had a wonderful time, actually.
And you're looking good.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Everybody ready to pray? Father, we thank you right now. God, for first just waking us up this morning, giving us the Falcon tees of our minds and our strength. We pray right now for wisdom. God, we pray for our mayor and city council, that you will continue to lead them and guide them in your ways. We pray for this great city, that your favor will continue to rest upon it. We ask right now, God, that you help us, God, in these times, God, that we are striving to be a better city, a better people. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Want to do the pledge?
Sure.
Please stand, place your hand over your heart, and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
And you'll alert me when we're going to do the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we go ahead and swear in Dave Gomez as Deputy Mayor?
So you really think you want to be on the top? I, Dave Gomez.
I, Dave Gomez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will, sorry, I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
The State of California.
That I, that I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
For a purpose of evasion.
For a purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to. On which.
Upon which, about to enter.
Much easier for me, I get your reading.
Yes.
Thank you.
What's the date?
Twenty-six.
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 Already twenty-six.
Two days left.
Rex, are you going to invite the other unique members down? Where are they? I thought they were already up here. Come on up.
Roll these frames, roll the frames, come on up.
You're not putting them up here, are you?
Let's put them down here, man.
Want to come down here?
Yeah, I, I misunderstood what you wanted. Okay, let's go down, let me drink some drinks. Why don't you come down here? Why don't you come down? Why don't you come down? Why don't you all come down? How often do we get all the way here? Light up around this, around the ribbon here.
That was an easy one. I'll get the, I think we're out.
You're going over here first, right here, right here. And then everybody stay in place like a friend and family.
Okay, let's get back to it. City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the council minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Are there any items on the consent calendar you should, we should pull?
C.C. six and, just C.C. six. I'll move, we accept the consent calendar currently comprised, pulling C.C. six.
I'll second.
All right. Who is messing with my voter? Has anybody from Palmdale been up here?
Do I take your hand?
I vote yes, so it's unanimous. You thought you were going to do it and make me look like an idiot, didn't you?
Usually works.
I'm hurt. All right. It was approved unanimously. Now, C.C. six. We have two speaker cards. Robert Adamo. Come on down, please.
How are you?
My name is Robert Adamo. I represent Chapel Hill Mobile State here in Lancaster. We're surprised to learn from a story at the Antelope Valley Press that changes to the rent control ordinance are being considered without any input from all the stakeholders, namely the mobile home park operators and owners. We are a tight community, and there hasn't been any major issues that we are aware of that would cause the city to make changes to the ordinance. I know other park owners and operators would agree that there are problems that need to be addressed. All players, residents, residents, park owners, and the city should talk about them before simply deciding to make a policy change. That would be the case today. I asked the city council for a continuance on agenda, item number six, so park owners can have the input and learn specifically why the action is warranted. As a member of the community, I think it's a fair request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You know, hold on, let, Mr. Adamo? Hold on. You know, it's meeting after meeting. I get people from mobile home parks that are living there that are clearly being abused by the owners.
Oh, totally. And I agree 100 percent.
And, you know, it's patience wore out.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, I, I do not think that this city is a city that we allow people to be bullied and, and put in a desperate situation these people are. So how would you propose we deal with that?
Well, see, I'm not the owner.
I know, I know.
So it's, but, I mean, I've been working on this thing for a long time because we have, we have a lot of problems from other people coming into our park. You know, they will tag everything and, you know, try to do all that stuff. So it's, I mean, I've tried to come up with.
I've been wanting to issue guns, but, you know, they tell me that's not a good idea.
Yeah. There's times when I wish I had one, but I wouldn't use it. But, I mean, it's, there's a lot of things like that. A lot of it's, you know, everybody's bored. You know, there's nothing for these kids to do, so they go out and destroy stuff.
But that's, but that's not the situation I'm concerned with. What I'm concerned about is the owners of the parks using their, their economic muscle to muscle these people. And they, where do they go? I mean, they can't move their trailers, they, they can't move their homes, and they're, they're imprisoned essentially by the owners. Do you see any, Jason, do you see any benefit in continuing this and asking for further input?
I would note that the change that's proposed is merely to the, to the available enforcement mechanisms. It doesn't change any of the requirements, merely the available enforcement options for enforcing the existing requirements that have been in place for many, many years. So for all those park owners who are in compliance, there should be no issue whatsoever.
Yes.
So you, sir, I would expect should be just fine.
Cool.
Okay, good, great.
Well, thank you.
You might tell the other park owners that if this type of activity continues, they're not going to like it. All right?
Yeah, because we, I mean, I don't know if you've ever been by our park.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's a little bit different from most of the ones around there.
Sure.
You know, and so we strive to get, have a nice community. I mean, it's, it's a lot of work.
I can imagine.
You know, but, but the guy that was supposed to take care of this couldn't make it, so they asked me to do it.
Yeah, I get it.
But I mean, you know, I got a lot to say with that, you know, at times, so, you know.
Great.
If it's ever brought up again, I would love to come back.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Aren't you going to welcome me back?
Hi.
It's been two years, you know?
I know, where have you been?
Oh, I've been in jail for two years, like you don't know. And I've been in a state mental hospital, and, you know, it's been all fun.
I didn't know that. Was Marvin in?
All fun.
Was Marvin?
Oh, I'm going to, I'm going to talk about it later. But I'm, I'll definitely, I'm definitely going to talk about it. The mobile home park, that's where all the nightmare began. So if I can, from what my testimony I give here today and the petition that I'd like to bring up, if it helps one person who's been, had to go through anything that I've had to go through, families, people losing their homes, I can maybe shed some light on why there's homeless people. First of all, it says the rent stabilization. Well, you know, from the, when, went back from '93 where it can only be raised 2 percent, believe me, the rent being upped 2 percent of $300 is not what's breaking anybody or it's not what the problem is. Now, since 2009, you know, there's a lot of reasons why none of those things matter. It's a lot more than just rent going up 2 percent. It's the problem with, let's see, your electric bill, gas bill will go up to $800, you're paying $300 a month, you know, you're in, you're in a, a home where, you know, it's low and where you could afford, you know, with your families. Now all of a sudden we're getting, you know, $800 gas and electric bills. I've been before, I've been up here before talking about this, and all I got was, you know, talked to the city manager, which of course was.
Hold on.
I'm going to need more time then.
Where are you going?
It's okay. She's like, yeah. Oh, don't have him around him.
Okay, you can have some more time.
And start kicking her or something. So we had that problem, but we came in and talked about that, and it was just the investors aren't going to like that. So, you know, what the concern was, is, you know, what the investors have to say, not that people are having to go out and get loans to make, you know, their rent payment for the month. And if you're late, of course, you get three in a row and you lose your place, even though you own it. Then we have the problem of, oh, Neighborhood Watch or, you know, Business Watch. But Neighborhood Watch, what a great program, you know? This strategically put people in your neighborhood to harass you and cause problems, you know, call the police and say that you're doing things, you know, people that I guess are protected class because they can come into the town and do anything they want because, you know, they'll be good for votes and they'll be good for, you know, you can pay them to do all kinds of things, hitman, you know, whatever you need them for. And that was great fun. I mean, our house was vandalized, robbed numerous times, our kids were raped. That's no joking matter, okay? And none of you wanted to hear it at the time. You didn't care. You didn't care that was going on. And it was going on.
You're making me sad. I gave you more time.
Give me more time? Why? Because I'm the one that needs to go to jail, really?
That's not what I meant.
And so muni services, that's another thing I'd like to talk about. You know, the thing that you get in the mail that says, oh, now you owe taxes. So I'd like an investigation done on that, too, to see how many people were up in court that were losing their homes from the muni services, little notices that they got. That was another good one.
Okay, thanks. Your time's up, all right?
And letting, well, I'll, I'll talk about that.
Motion to approve C.C. six?
Seconded. I forgot what it was, hold on. You fixed my voting device. That was good. Well, maybe you didn't fix them. You know, I wish we had an electrician in here to fix that.
Would you like to do a roll call while we wait?
What?
Do you want to do a roll call?
Can we just?
It's an ordinance, so we should do it by a, by a roll call, and I'd be happy to do that while.
Okay, good, let's do it.
Councilmember Mann.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Underwood Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Molly.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, new business item one. Oh, wait a minute, Henry's here, right? Okay, are we ready to do this? Let's do this. This is the Justice Sunday recognition. You got it?
Yes, I got the certificates. Just a quick report. I was honored to attend and with the mayor and Angela Underwood Jacobs, the Justice Sunday event. It was amazing, the talent that these young people showed, not only for their cause, but their, their involvement and the time they've put into it. I don't know if you have any things to add to that, Angela?
I would just say that it, it gets better and better every single year, and what I was, what I found out, too, is that the, they had actually prepared their own scripts, which was just over the top, and I was honored and pleased to be there and, and to know that we have this type of talent, you know, residing in our community, City of Lancaster, is just amazing. So thank you guys for, for what you did. It was just completely awesome.
Yes. And with that, I don't know if Mary, you have any comments?
Let's turn it over to the bishop and to Nigel, and then you'll handle.
Yeah, we had a process, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Vice Mayor, and to our City Manager, and to all of the staff, we certainly appreciate the support that we have received over the last years of putting together what we call Justice Sunday. And Justice Sunday is all about acknowledging what Dr. Martin Luther King stood for when he paid up the final debt of saying, our country is a good country, just need to be brought to its senses. And I think by doing what he did, he brought that to bear. And what we've tried to do is to keep it going, and this young brother here that's going to talk to the mayor and everybody else is the guy who really, really put this together. We, we started off with using people in the community, and then Nigel and I got together and we found out about the Antelope Valley High School, and he can tell you about the rest of that, and it is just, it's gone. And we are thankful and blessed, and thank you so much. And my mayor was there to also make words for us. We really appreciate that, sir. Thank you so very much. The guy that did the whole thing for us, as for us, I am concerned, Nigel Hawley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I would be remiss not to thank my direct director, who gives me the freedom to do most of this stuff, Lee DeRico. He allows me to do all kinds of stuff, so I want to thank him for that. Okay. Most of what I asked for. All right. First of all, this was not done exclusively by me. Every year, we include the youth more and more. This year, we had some extraordinary youth that stepped up and showed out. But all of it was possible because when I went to the principal at AV High School, who was standing here, Jody Radford, she immediately said, just tell me what you need and we can do it. And we've been able to do it for the last few years under her leadership and allowing us to be able to do this. We've been able to expand from just Antelope Valley High School to Eastside High School to Highland High School to Palmdale High School, and every year, we've just been adding more and more schools, getting more and more of our community involved in this event. So I want to say that it's really not about us, it's about our youth and what the City of Lancaster is doing to build success for tomorrow. That success lies on the shoulders of the youth that we are mentoring, that we are nurturing, and that we are raising up to be the futures, the future leaders of tomorrow. I can be long-winded, so I'm going to not say much more. I want to thank Donna Tremere. I'm going to ask Donna Hill to come up, Glenda McKinnon to come up, Donna Hill from Scott Wilk's office, Glenda McKinnon from Tom Lackey's office, and then we have Donna Tremere from the supervisor's office. They're going to all be presenting certificates to the youth for what they have done and the amazing show that they put on on January the 20th. And if you weren't there this year, I implore you to be there next year because these kids are doing an amazing job. And as Underwood Jacobs comes down, who has actually spoken at Justice Sunday and has always supported us, we'll wait for her to get here and then we'll go ahead and hand it over to you. Okay, we'll go ahead, I'm, we'll go ahead and bring up the youth and the other persons that made this possible. There's a few that aren't here because they're really busy with track practice and softball practice and a million other things, so some of them aren't here, but I'm going to say their name nonetheless. Lyric Wooten. Erin Bell, she's an hire. Okay. Joseph's not here, but Joseph Ramirez both was the emcee and had a role in the play. Jasmine Shannon, who was at the football, at the softball game. Amani John Baptiste. Isabel Bautizar, who's at track practice. We want to acknowledge, well, let me get the rest of the students done. Artes Alvarez. Shamaya Evans. And Tiana Felix. Okay, we also are going to want to give some accommodations to Palmdale High School, Palmdale High School's choir, the Antelope Valley Acappella Choir. Led by Ricky Bullard, who are here. Antelope Valley High School's ROTC program. Sergeant Major Ward. Antelope Valley's Drama Club, who's going to be represented by Summer Gutierrez. Our principal, Jody Radford. Vice principal from Eastside High School, Joseph Viera, who couldn't make it today. From Highland High School, Sandra Gordon, who couldn't make it today. The Holy Renaissance Church, under the leadership of John the Revelator. And Desert Sands High School.
Yeah, Michael did not make it.
Okay, all of these are the people, and more importantly, the youth, that sacrificed their winter break, they sacrificed hours and hours and hours of rehearsals and training and, and writing to put on the historical. put on the historical presentation that we call Justice Sunday.
We have so many presentations and special delivery. I don't know if you saw that, I just got them hot off the press. Thank you all. I have attended this event many years and this was incredible. I learned a lot, it was very historical, and it was a great play. And congratulations and kudos on behalf of the supervisor for your hard work and your dedication and your tenaciousness to move forward in our country in great spirit. Thank you.
I'll just be really brief, but I just, I love seeing your faces. And I just really wanted to thank, I want to thank the city and our community, because when we think of, I just want to speak from an educator's point of view, is that we were given the stage and the environment in order to really experience authentic learning from the ground up. You had your themes, you wrote, you know, you wrote about it, you researched it, you spoke eloquently, and you were able to perform it for the community. And I think that, I loved seeing it. And if you're not certain about what it was, but it was a mother and her son trying to get through the day and hiccups all throughout the course of the day with inventions that were created by just incredible African-American people within our community that are often unsung or that we didn't know about. But you learned so much about them and were able to express that, just to be able to see you act, to sing, and that you wrote it and created it and gave it to our community. I just wanted to, one, tell you guys you did an amazing job, but two, also just to thank our community, our city for providing them, like I said, that stage and that environment for them to be able to show you how well they did. Thank you.
With that, we'll do some pictures if you want to step.
Okay, so some of our softball players have made it.
Wait a second and let everybody clear out. Although I'm a little hurt, nobody wants to watch the meeting. If you were more entertaining, they'd stay. Okay. NB1, who's presenting? Jason, if you could fill us in.
Mayor and council, before you today is a authorization and approval of a professional services agreement to perform implementation services. And this was not necessarily controversial, not necessarily a negative story. We wanted to keep it as a positive story. The reality is, is that now we're moving forward with six additional cities, adding to Cal Choice or California Choice Energy Authority, which is a really great new story. As of today, we're operating five cities: Apple Valley, Lancaster, Rancho Mirage, Pico Rivera, and San Jacinto. This will add six to that list, which is, which includes, let me find it real quick, Baldwin Park, Commerce, Hanford, Palmdale, Pomona, and Santa Paula. That brings, thank you very much, thank them. That brings a total number of cities that we'll be operating under California Choice Energy Authority to 11 cities. Now, if you recall, when we started this venture, we were the one, we were the only one. And your authority or your leadership and your ability to let us run and try to identify other partners in this venture allowed us to not only save money, but allow those other cities to effectively launch in an efficient and effective manner. So, by the end or by the middle of 2020, probably around June, depending on when Edison can roll out our customers, June of 2020, we'll have 11 operating cities under the California Choice Energy Authority. We continue to work with other cities who are partners or potential partners and trying to identify where we goes in the future. I can, I'm also proud to say that all five of the operating CCAs have been operating in the black since the beginning of their operation. So, it's a very good news story. And with that, I'd recommend your approval of these contracts for these cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? We're good. Corbin Ingram.
Hello, mayor and council people.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm pretty good. My name is Corbin Ingram, and the reason why I'm here is because after reading the CCA, I realized that I have a lot to offer with a grant that I'm working on with the National Science Foundation. And it's dealing with microgrids and blockchain. And this is the future of blockchain. And I'm here seeking an MOU from the city so I can put it in a grant and work within the CCA. Because as you know, if you're familiar with blockchain and the microgrids, blockchain itself is gonna take over. It's the new wave of the internet. And if you don't know it, anybody who knows about Bitcoin, they kind of know about blockchain. But blockchain goes all over, goes to internet of things, it goes everywhere. And my background, I was certified by the California Energy Commission as an energy auditor in 1980. I went back and got another certification from them in renewable resources and conservation in 1983. I have an engineering undergrad, I've got two engineering graduate degrees, I've got an MBA, and I'm close to a doctorate in business. I want to do a Pepsi challenge with anybody. That's where my head is, especially with the sponsors. I'm just as good as those sponsors. I want to work with this, the City of Lancaster, with this particular grant that I'm talking about. And like I said, currently I'm seeking an MOU. That's all I have to say.
Have you met with the staff?
Excuse me?
Have you met with the city staff?
No, I haven't. I actually talked to, I was at the Palmdale City Council meeting a few days ago pitching the same thing. Now, I realize you're part of the CCA here in Lancaster, so it's all one. And the key is if I can work within that and do my research and my studies to actually bring blockchain into the valley, because this valley is prime. We've got some of the best sun, and I love to microgrid, starting with the schools, and showing where the energy's going and showing how you can conserve energy. Because I know the City of Lancaster wants to get to zero energy. You know, I've done my homework. And I know that this can be done through blockchain. Also, it can add more revenue, jobs, you name it, through the blockchain.
You're starting from the top instead of working up.
Yeah, I know.
You know, you gotta meet with the city staff, Jason will take care of that. We'll get all your contact information, and then they bring you to us after they vetted whatever your proposal is. Because they kind of know that we look smart, but we're not very smart.
Well, I know, you cover a lot of ground, I understand that, you know. And I'm more of a, you know, a technology geek, so.
But before you leave, they'll set up a meeting with you and then we'll go from there, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any questions?
Move to approve NB1.
I'll second. I'll second.
Let's vote. So, tell me, did the IBW fix this?
I fixed it while you were down there. Had to take the gum off the button.
Darrell?
Yes?
I want you to explain to him after the meeting that you can go to hell for lying just as easy as anything else. Okay.
Unanimous.
Pass is unanimous. All right, public hearing item number one. Do we have any speakers?
We have three.
Joselyn Corbett and Lee Durico. Hey, Lee Durico, Chief of Police, that has a ring to it, doesn't it?
Looks nice on paper, right? Good evening.
We gotta get a uniform for him, you know, we gotta get some stars. We gotta dress him up.
I found a-
We're gonna have to take some votes, because some of the examples I've gotten already, yeah, I don't think.
I found a really good one online, it's kind of a drum major sort of a thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Let's have a contest to design Lee's uniform, right?
You know, that might be a little scary to see what else we might do.
Yeah, I know, I know, I can just see it now.
Good evening. Last year, you directed staff to prepare an ordinance to address the unlawful use of motels and hotels in the city for purposes of human trafficking, particularly sex trafficking of minors. City staff and the members of the Criminal Justice Commission discussed the proposed ordinance over several meetings. The commission then formed an ad hoc committee to look further into the issue. They met with members of the Sheriff's Department's Human Trafficking Team, who offered to conduct a training session for motel owners, operators, and employees to help them identify behaviors and physical characteristics that might be signs of illegal trafficking. Staff sent a notice of the anti-human trafficking training session to the owners and operators of all 22 motels in the city and inviting them to attend the training session and bring their employees. The session was held on November 27, 2018. I'm sorry to report that of the 22 motel and hotels in the city, only two sent people. Nonetheless, the training was very informative and the attendees were interested and engaged. Staff provided the attendees with a copy of the draft ordinance and apprised them of their obligations pursuant to the ordinance as well as existing state law. Staff brought the draft ordinance back to the Criminal Justice Commission at its January meeting, and the seven commissioners voted unanimously to recommend that city council adopt the ordinance. The ordinance you have before you is the result of the numerous discussions between city staff, the CJC, and the members of the Sheriff's Department Human Trafficking Team. It expressly declares that it is unlawful public nuisance for any responsible person as defined in the ordinance to directly or indirectly maintain or permit the use of a motel for the purpose of human trafficking, sex trafficking, and several other unlawful activities. It states that any motel or hotel at which such a public nuisance occurs is deemed a nuisance motel subject to abatement. The ordinance further provides that every motel or hotel owner, operator, manager, and employee is responsible for preventing the use of the motel for human trafficking and other illegal activities. It sets forth various indications of such activity and states the person who suspects that kind of activity going on must notify the sheriff's station and/or the city public safety department. The ordinance further sets forth registration requirements, prohibits hourly room rentals, and other basic operational regulations designed to help deter human trafficking and identify possible perpetrators. Lastly, the ordinance establishes an administrative citation program related to nuisance motels, setting a $1,000 penalty for a first violation and $5,000 for subsequent violations. It also expressly reserves the city's right to utilize all other legal remedies to abate a nuisance motel, including criminal proceedings, business license suspension or revocation, and civil injunctive relief pursuant to the California red light abatement law set out in the California Penal Code, which allows for closing the premises for up to one year and obtaining a civil penalty of up to $25,000. At the training session, the human trafficking team provided a pamphlet from the Department of Homeland Security. You have a copy attached to your ordinance, it was also posted with the agenda. It sets out, it's specifically created for the hospitality industry, and it includes useful information about the signs of possible human trafficking that may be seen by employees at motels and hotels. We also videotaped the training session. Should city council ultimately adopt this ordinance, city staff will issue copies of the pamphlet, the video, the training video, and a copy of the ordinance to each motel and hotel owner prior to commencing enforcement of the ordinance. It's our goal to help, to hope to enlist the cooperation of motel and hotel owners in taking proactive steps to deter human trafficking and sex trafficking, but we will not hesitate to use the remedies in the ordinance and those available under state law to shut a motel down if they choose not to fulfill their legal and moral obligations. We're both available for any questions, should we have any?
Mayor Parrish, before we go any further, I may have missed it, but if you did not, would you please open the public hearing?
Oh.
Don't make me do that again.
Public hearing's open. All right, do it again. Any questions? Any comments? Yeah, I'm a little concerned that we're not making a distinction between minors and adults. I think that when we're talking about minors, what we're really talking about is child molestation. I mean, that's what we're talking about. And I think that the remedy should be quicker and more draconian. Meaning, if there's some way we can bulldoze one of these hotels for aiding and abetting child molestation, and I'm dead serious, I want to bulldoze the hotel. We only gotta do one, the others will probably come to the meeting. Right?
Right. You know, I think that especially to make the differentiation between minors and adults, no minor can be consensually involved in the sex trade. So, irregardless of how they got into it and how that progressed through their life, they are still, that is a clear violation for any minor.
And if, you know, I mean, certainly, you know, at some point, the hotel owner may not know what's going on, but at some point, he should know what's going on, right?
Right.
So, I mean, let's go ahead and go forward with the ordinance as it is, but I want you to revisit it, and I want that distinction clearly made.
Okay.
You know, because there is a difference. I don't, I don't, I don't care how you want to talk about the difference, but we all know there's a difference.
There absolutely is a difference. Just for your information, when we met with the human trafficking team, we originally had it drafted, really crafted more just towards minors. They requested that we sort of broaden a little bit so that we can go after the minor trafficking, but we can also address the adult, the trafficking related to adults.
And I don't want you to get me wrong, I mean, I certainly see that trafficking against people's will is broad, and it includes adults, you know, especially people who find themselves here and next thing you know, somebody, we don't need to go into it all. But there is a distinction.
Sure.
Right? It's not to say that I want to minimize, you know, I mean, when this is forced upon people, the people doing it, you know. You sure we can't hang them in the parking lot?
I can tell you, mayor, that getting to the place where we're gonna actually demo a nuisance motel is absolutely someplace that we can go, regardless of this ordinance. Our existing nuisance laws on the city's books and the state law absolutely allows us to get to that place. There is a little bit of a process, but we can get there quickly. We've actually filed the civil cases, the red light cases in this city before, several years ago, and we shut people down. And it works.
And that's not beyond the scope of asset forfeiture as well, for recovery of any resources that the city expensed to enforce the law as it relates to those businesses. I'd just like to comment too, Deputy Mayor Lisa Rodriguez worked with us on this too as well. There's been a quite in-depth discussion with the Criminal Justice Commission and the committee and their participation, and we had many discussions and for opportunities for the public to weigh in on this.
The sooner the better.
Yes, sir.
They, you know, they either clean it up or they don't.
Yep.
And if they don't?
Yep. That's a legal thing, that's a legal thing.
I agree, well, I do have a question though. Do we currently have a human trafficking team here in Lancaster? Do we currently have a human trafficking team here in Lancaster?
We have a human trafficking team that operates out of Headquarters Bureau for the Sheriff's Department. They've been quite active for us and certainly are very happy to see that this item has come forward for our city, and how we will move forward with this will be an example for them to take to other cities as well. So they're been really great to work with. And then beyond just the Sheriff's Department, beyond the task force that's involved is multiple law enforcement agencies as well as federal agencies. So the mentality of the human trafficking has changed, where we had more of a prosecutor, prosecutor, excuse me, we prosecuted people that participated in this trade, irregardless of what their position was in it. Now we're recognizing the fact that a number of these people are truly victims themselves, okay, and they're coerced or intimidated or bullied into this, the position they're in.
We clearly have to make a distinction. I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not interested in taking a misdemeanor and developing a felony out of it. What I'm interested in is stopping the victimization of people.
Absolutely.
I guess that my concern is the response time. So something occurs, what's the general response time that they're able to come to the city in Lancaster?
Well, typically, if it comes to our attention, it would depend on the scope of what we're dealing with, to make a determination, is it something more involving the property owner themselves and a corrective action, all the way up into a more egregious type situation that develops an operational standpoint for law enforcement. So it's not necessarily going to be a situation where there's certain alleged activity. Obviously, we would work initially with, depending on the type of activity, with the property owner. If it's something that is clearly based on whatever operational things that the Sheriff's Department's included based on information we've received as well, then we would make that more as an operational issue. But I will say that the human trafficking unit from the Sheriff's Department is very involved, this is a major undertaking for most of the law enforcement agencies in Southern California, and they're here, they are actively working within our city. It's not something we advertise, obviously, if they're doing something from an operational basis, but we've had several operations recently.
Thank you.
One last question, can I drive the bulldozer?
Absolutely. We need to get pictures of that, sir.
I've always wanted to.
I'll lift you with a heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne? Granai?
Hi, my name's Joanne Granai, and-
So you're Joanne Granai, I thought you were somebody else.
I'm a lot of people, a lot of things to a lot of people, sweetheart. I want to say I find it ironic, before I get going, that the issue of a motel was a, drove a wedge between Mayor Paris and I several years ago. His stance and his position on a motel with the Mongols and all that, that kind of put us on opposite ends of something.
You didn't think I should close down that hotel with the Mongols? What's the matter with you?
Well, I will say, let's not rehash that one, but we'll come back to this one, and it's funny that a motel is bringing me back to your side. I find it ironic in that telling, in that I was raised in the foster system by the time I was 11 to 17, and a lot of your kids that you're going to find that being sex trafficked are in the DCFS or in the probation system, okay, the ones that are in the foster homes and the group homes and the things like that, a lot of girls, because these young girls get in with these older girls that are probation. My experience is probation, I was a 601, became a 602, okay? We were exposed to a lot of things at a very young age that we shouldn't have seen, and we should, you know, you don't get money, you don't get things, and you've got these older girls that are coming in and saying, oh, if you want clothes, because you're not going to get a clothing voucher, you're not going to get money for it, let me show you how to get that. So it's happening in the probation system, and yeah, these hotel owners, motel owners, they know what's going on. When some little girl that's 13 years old is getting a room with daddy that don't look nothing like her, you know, and daddy's not acting very fatherly, so they know what's going on. So I want to say thank you for the stance the city is taking and the proactive approach that you're taking, because it impacts you for the rest of your life. You know, you carry those scars with you, you can heal, you can go to therapy, you can go, as an adult woman, you still carry that, you still remember, you know, and I want to thank Lisa as well for her hard work and the things that she's doing as well, you know, that fighting the good fight for us, okay? I would like to see it be a part of the CUP, as these hotels and motels are coming up to get their CUPs from you, on the planning level, that they're required to take this course, it's not an option, it should be a condition of the CUP. And so I would like to see that happen as well, including bars.
I like that.
You know, the bars, the motels, you know, I love the fact that the local bars have, are you a traffic, a sex traffic, you know, victim or human trafficking, it's in the bathroom in the women's department, in the women's bathroom, some of them have it up there. I would like to see, you know, different businesses that have been found to have that kind of acts, again, Deputy Mayor Lisa, if she can help, you know, those places where they frequent, you know, where those transactions are taking place, make that a condition of their CUP, that they take this course, so that the plausible deniability of being aware, I didn't know, that's gone, no, you were trained, you knew, you know, or you didn't look, or you chose to be blind to this. And I love the fact that the city of Lancaster is choosing not to be blind to this, and so I want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, you should rethink the Mongols. Okay, Fran. Before you start, Fran, Joseline, how long before I get to drive the? What, what'd she say? Dave, could you take care of that for me? Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Paris.
Hi.
Vice Mayor, Councilpeople, and ladies and gentlemen, and staff. I'm Fran Sarah Saris, and I am ecstatic that this came on, and I'm very happy that it's happening. It's a long time coming. Children have been misused for so many years and so, so long, and nobody's really done anything. And I'm happy to see that our city is doing something, and that's what I want to say. Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you. Marla Lozano.
Maria.
Oh. Maria. You need some work on the I and the L, okay?
Don't they just make a great couple over there, aren't they just the cutest thing? On Justice Sunday, the man that came up here and spoke, I'd like to thank him for bringing up the issue of child soldiering, and also that he directly said that, you know, Lee Durico is responsible for that. The human trafficking situation, you know, is something that needed to be looked at a long time ago, because it's just getting worse and worse. When I lived, when I was homeless and I lived in the lot, that is now bulldozed down, that all the trees are mulched and everything, I was there with my two dogs, so I was in between the Valley Motel and Sands Hotel, and I tell you what, what was going on in those hotels, girls would be running from there screaming, guys would be dragging them back by their hair, I mean, it's not like nobody knew what was going on, right? And, you know, dogs can smell a predator a mile away, and at least mine hated them. My dog would run clear across the field barking, which of course, we have the barking dog ordinance though, to get rid of that, and I would call the police, I would go all the way down to wherever I could get a phone and call and say, this is what's going on. No one showed up. As a matter of fact, if they did, it was, we were, you know, doing something wrong, like what are we, what are we in anybody else's business for, you know, because it's a business, it's definitely a business. And also, I'd like to say about the hotels that actually allowed it to happen, there's other things, too, the hotels are filled with all kinds of stuff from burglaries, from, you know, that they were getting paid for, too, local burglaries. And I guess a lot of the vouchers, though, that we get, that are given to some of these people and girls and stuff, directly from those same hotels, imagine that. So what's up with that? You know, also, too, you know, the little booklet that you can call and be a wee tip, you know, to tell on somebody or something, and then you get $1,000 in two weeks in a voucher for the hotel. That's another good program that is directly, you know, public safety. And it's public safety, yeah. So predator licenses, you want to talk about that? That people are given licenses to be predators, that they just have to show their little license, and they don't, you know, they don't have any, you know, get in any kind of trouble at all. But then, you know, that was made up when, you know, the whole deal with Kamala Harris and Eric Holder and all that, you know, that let it all be okay. So I just would like to, you know, that I have to say.
Thank you. Michael Reeves, I'm surprised to see you speaking.
Well, I am. Good evening. The internet describes human trafficking as, quote, "the action or practice of illegally transporting people from one country or area to another, typically for the purposes of forced labor or sexual exploitation," unquote. Tonight's proposed action is directed toward trafficking outside and inside the city's motels and hotels. I believe other establishments in the city need the same scrutiny as motels and hotels. I am speaking of what almost seems to be an endless number of massage parlors and nail salons in the city. Yesterday, I took a three-hour walk between Avenue K and Avenue J with the borders of 10th Street West and 20th Street West. I counted 13 massage-style establishments and nine nail salons in the four-square, 10-block area. In some of them, I didn't observe a vehicle outside that could belong to an employee inside. In other words, the employee was dropped off or took public transportation. At one time, not yesterday, I observed a van dropping off employees at a nail salon with other women still in the van. I went to the assessor's office this morning, was able to get the owners' names of some of the establishments. Some street numbers did not come up in the computer after repeated attempts and assistance by assessor personnel. Four of five addresses for massage parlors that I could locate had owners who resided outside the city. The internet has filled with stories about sexual exploitation and forced labor in massage parlors and nail salons. I believe the city should investigate these places and include them in anti-trafficking ordinance, if needed. Thank you.
Michael, I noticed you didn't mention public restrooms. Is there a motion?
First of all, I'd like to point out that our deputy mayor system that we do have here is working. Lisa, thank you very much for what you did with this, but our deputy mayors do take a look at this kind of stuff and work with it, so I'd like to introduce ordinance number 1056.
I'll second. Mayor, would you please close the public hearing? Indeed.
I'm actually kind of curious, is there a problem with nail salons and? No, you can't. Lisa, is there a?
Not so much with nail salons, but with massage parlors, we have seen.
So how do we distinguish the ones that are being forced versus the ones who?
The Sheriff Department does do multi-stings or investigations within the massage parlors, so I've seen them do it for all of them, so they just don't pick them, they do a good job with that.
Okay. The one thing he said about the van, you know, it kind of gives me some concerns. Let's go check out the van.
Well, I think some of that is like indentured servitude issues.
That's what I mean.
As well, so, I mean, and there is some issues as it relates to that, so.
So, you know, it shouldn't be hard for us to recognize, you're not allowed to have slavery in Lancaster.
Correct.
And if they're, and if they're loading women up in vans and dropping them off, it's probably a good hit. So maybe we should work a little harder at it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, good. Public hearing's closed. Is there a motion?
I'd like to introduce ordinance 1056.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Passes. So, we now get to the Code of Ethics, we're appointed officials, and you presented that last week, didn't you? Say that again, I'm sorry. Didn't you make that presentation last meeting?
I did briefly, Mr. Mayor.
So just as a point of discussion, is, everybody had a chance to review it? Any comments? So if we're going to enact it, what, I should put it on?
It's agendized for adoption as well, it's discussion impossible adoption is on the agenda, so you can take a motion and approve it tonight.
Okay, any speaker cards? Oh, I do have speaker cards on that issue. How interesting. David Paul. Say something nice, David.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, good evening, everyone. Yeah, it's a great night, and the reason I came up for this one is I had an idea for quite a while, and I've shopped it around, but Mayor, I would like to see the council appoint me as Commissioner-at-Large. I go to every meeting, and oftentimes, there aren't, there isn't a quorum, so the meeting gets delayed or canceled, and a lot of times, I know that the chairs get the information they're supposed to, I don't have to vote, but I could complete a quorum, and, you know, you could just email me all the stuff, because a lot of times, the commission doesn't get the stuff that they're trying to read through and digest until the day of the meeting, so I could be on that schedule, I'm familiar with the workings of all these things through watching for many years, and that would be a good way to have us, a quorum for the meetings, because that's the most important thing, that we have the meetings go on, so that's my suggestion, and I have a card in for after, if it's required, public comments, and I'll try and cheer the room up again, thank you.
David, that was a good idea.
Thank you, sir, yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I can't hear you.
I know better than that. I want an email whenever there is not a quorum, and I want to know who showed up and who didn't, and I'd also like to look into the idea of making all of the council members, commissioners at large, and David, it's your idea, I think it's a good idea, let's see what we can do. But last time I made you a commissioner, you quit. Just an observation. You know, furthering the idea that we're a city of accountability, I wasn't going to let you get away with it. Thank you so much for that. What's the, what's the purpose of having white hair if you can't act like a dad? Maria. Okay, did you see how nice David was?
Real quickly, on the human trafficking thing again, because I have a lot to say on the Code of Conduct, and I hope I can, you won't stop me when I get there.
Probably will.
But why the nail salons, it's because of the chemicals of the nail salons that they use to put on people's faces to, so they can knock them out and use them. So, yeah, it's a business, too, so.
I haven't got my nails done forever. I've lost track.
And also, the human trafficking, you know, is also, the girls that they pick up and take to jail, because, you know, law enforcement, when they came, the only people that they arrested were the girls, which now, because there's so much money in the rehab and all that for them, believe me, when I was in jail, it's a sad, sad story.
Maria, can we stay on subject?
I'm just saying, so many girls in there had been sexually abused, and, you know, instead of the predators, you know, or whatever being, they were put in jail and had to go through, but it's, like I said, that's a big-
I thought we were talking about the Code of-
That's a big business, too, well, yeah, you shouldn't be condoning it or be a part of it if, you know- Well, yeah, you shouldn't be condoning it or be a part of it if, you know...
Well, I would certainly hope that none of the commissioners are frequenting these places. In fact, we'd probably remove them if they did.
Well, you know, that's different than, again, what we're talking about with being, you know, a child or being young and being sexually assaulted, okay?
From a Maria standpoint.
Yeah, okay. Code of Ethics. Well, when I came up to city council meeting, I was asked to come up here two years ago and to discuss my homeless issues or whatever by Lee DeRico. Come up here, Maria, we want to talk to you. And I'm, how much, you knew about it, but anyway, I come up here, he wasn't here, my dog, you know, that I always have with me, my service dog, my lovely, beloved service dog that I had for thirteen years, that slept in my pillow under my arm every night. I said, sure, because I'm, you know, thinking, ah, yeah, help. I come up here, he wasn't here, so my dog's in the car, sleeping, every window rolled down, big eyes, full ice water. I'm up here, I kept going out checking her. Finally, I was like, I had to bring her inside because it was hot out. So I go in at the car, got her, brought her into City Hall. Next thing I know, where is he? Oh, he left. Jordan, Deputy Jordan comes in. Oh, this was after Lee comes in and tells me, you can give me a voucher for the Sands Motel, which I told him I can't go there because they won't let me come there with my dogs because they bark at people. Here comes Deputy Jordan...
Maria.
...grabbing my dog's leash.
One more time, standpoint.
I'm trying to.
No, you're not. You're way off the point.
How am I way off the point?
Just...
They killed my dog. They took, he drugged my dog, kicked my dog, and then the police came and arrested me, took my dog to the pound, took me to jail for animal abuse, me. I was in jail ten days later, they euthanized my dog, knowing they were going to do that the whole time, because they said my dog was a threat.
Maria.
Public safety.
Maria, we're done, okay?
Really? You guys can't even talk to me about it? Do you want to just...
Maria, it's a public meeting. We're done.
I had to go out and shoot people's dogs down on the field. Something should be done about it. He should not get away with what he did.
Maria, we're done.
I'll move we adopt CA 1.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. And thank you for putting this together and making it work. I'm hoping to see an improvement, at least in people having a clear understanding of what's expected. Okay? Thank you.
And you did a great job. I got a lot of feedback from all the chairs that you were doing a good job in putting it all together.
Everyone played a part, that's for sure.
Let's, we have a report on the activities of the Board of Directors of Animal Valley Transit Authority. You know, that's probably the most active JPA we have. You know, you're doing a good job with that. So are you, Macy. Thanks. So are you. Angela, thank you.
It's one of the best ones. You did ask us to make a little bit of continuity across the board where you could appoint anyone that you would see fit or that is qualified for the AVTA. So we did make those changes today, and I think it's going to go back to each jurisdiction. And once it goes to the jurisdiction, then you can look at appointing, it doesn't have to be a councilman anymore, it could be virtually anybody. But you asked for those changes. We made those changes. The rest of the Board of Directors, it passed unanimously. We got different reports today, and all of them were very positive. It's, we're moving in the right direction. We ask the community bear with us that while we're making the transition, when you're making a transition from diesel to electric, there's a lot of transitions and dual partnerships that we have to do. So we ask for the community to help us through that. Fran was there today. She always helps us through. She is part of AVTA, and thank you, Fran. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Macy, why don't you work with Marvin and Angela and put together some guidelines as to what you think would be the best type of board member? So, you know, so that we all have some guidance as to what kind of...
Future guidance.
What kind of skills they should have, what kind of background they should have. What I hope to do is enhance the organization. And I'm less concerned with what their political connections are, all right? But, you know, if you just send me out into the wilderness, I usually come back with a cactus. Okay? Thank you. Okay. What else we got?
We got council reports.
Okay, council reports. What do we got?
ABA QMD. We are looking at a ordinance that will change the landscape as far as commercial lawn mowers. We're looking at having an ordinance where we will help replace all the commercial gas-powered lawn mowers.
Tell them why that's important first.
Well, a lawnmower, one lawnmower is equivalent to seven vehicles on the road. So if we can get rid of a commercial lawnmower, you're talking about sixty, the emissions from sixty-three vehicles for that period of time. And if we can change that from sixty-three vehicles on the road per one lawnmower, that we can help with eliminating all the airborne diseases that we have here. The asthma, we have a high concentration of asthma. We have, I think it's fifteen percent higher than anywhere else in the county. So it's a large, large amount, so we need to do something with it. But we will help them with, we're looking at phasing it in over a five-year period, and we will help them with the cost of that. So that's what we're looking to do. If we can do that, we'll take a lot of lawn mowers off. It will be hundreds, if not thousands, of cars off the road, the equivalent of the emissions for it. So that's what we're doing at the ABA QMD. And Raj was there this week, he helped out. I appreciate your help, Raj, with that.
Good. Thank you. Anything else?
Just the, what we did on Friday, the Board of Trade Outlook Conference. I thought it was a great outlook conference. AVTA was the lead sponsorship in that. And we got to talk about the need for water, the need for why we're going electric, and just so the community can understand why we're doing all these things. It's not just because we want to. There is actually a need out there.
Good. Thank you. Okay, we're going to have a, well, let's go through it. No action on housing, no action on finance, no action on power, no action on successor agency. And now we're going to have a presentation on the recent storms.
Yes, Mayor. Between your last council meeting, as you recall, we've had a significant amount of rain. And with that significant amount of rain comes a lot of challenges for our staff, and I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge their efforts. If you look at the logs, a number of trees were down for the wind, a number of drainage systems were, you know, inundated. And of course, we weathered the storm, so to speak, very well. So there's a couple of things that we need to acknowledge in preparation, is that our guys in the field are out there nightly. So when we're all asleep in our beds and trees are falling down, our guys are out there. And whether you're on the east side or west side, they're handling those issues to make sure the water goes down and make sure traffic flows in the morning. So hopefully, when you get up in the morning, you don't see what happened at night. And I think there's a great opportunity to acknowledge their efforts, as well as acknowledging the public, or the Emergency Preparedness Group that we have, not only trained internally and closely, but every level of emergency is a different level, to a point where you open the EOC or to the point where you send out your crews and loaders and things of that nature. But it's also important to train up the community as it relates to how they respond. And I just have a short video to acknowledge the CERT team and the CERT training that went on as well, not as part of the storms, but as part of our daily preparation, and not only for emergencies, but also weather events.
We're finally moving into some more of the high schools with CERT, Community Emergency Response Team, training, and it's preparing civilians for being ready for a disaster. And the excitement is we're finally moving it into some more of the high school level, bringing the younger people along and getting them ready so they can help take care of the school. The idea of having students trained and the staff trained so that they can take care of themselves for a period of time until first responders can get to them is exciting for us.
Today, we're having our CERT Basic One Training Class for Cortezale students and Cortezale staff and some other district members to get them prepared for disasters and some other things that we have scheduled in our program. We'll be going over just the basic concepts of CERT, so fire safety, earthquake safety, and some other things. And then, as we go throughout the class, other things will be added into the program as well. They'll be prepared to help others in a disaster.
AVCERT's been working with the high school district for about the past five years, trying to get CERT into the high schools as an elective, or the students to take. The city of Lancaster stepped in, and we helped with this effort, meeting with the high school districts. So we could help not only the high schools out, but it'll help the city out, to help the community out, and the Animal Valley as a whole. If all of our high schools have CERT in it as an elective, these students can take pride in their schools and in the valley and help out. The city's involved just to make the city and the community a better place. It's always good to get our youth involved and take a better interest in the city. The more prepared we get from the bottom up, the more prepared we are as a whole, as a community.
I encourage everyone to come out and get their basic CERT training or any type of training that may help you help other people in the time of need, because I think it's extremely important for people to be prepared for what may happen. It's a really good experience, and it not only teaches you a lot of things about what to do in a situation, but also teaches community-building skills, leadership skills, and things like that.
We're really excited about seeing this happen. We're thankful for the city that's been helping us and working with us to talk with the school district and stuff with that. Just really grateful for everybody that's been able to see this and want to make it happen.
Needless to say, we're really proud of our crew that's out there handling those emergencies on a regular basis and preparing, so thank you for the time.
Jason A., Captain Polgar called and talked with me from the Fire Department. And CERT is a combination of the Fire Department and Sheriff Department, asking for some help to purchase some containers. They have all the equipment to go in the containers, but they don't have the places to put the containers. We can probably put them at the fairgrounds or that if the city could help with some of the other stuff. I'll talk with you later, but I just wanted to make it known that we're working on it. Okay. And Tom, will you let the captain know that we're working on it, so? Thank you.
Any questions? Good. Okay. Any other announcements?
Yes, sir. One last announcement. It is with pleasure that I announce with us, as a result of the mayor's concurrence and our evaluation that we selected Jeff Campbell to be the incoming and next Parks, Recreation, and Arts Director. So you'd like to get him here. You all know him and worked for him a long time. He's going to hit the ground running. We're excited for the opportunities and the changes he's going to bring that fit well within this organization, and we're excited for him. So good luck, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay. City Clerks.
This is a time to address the City Council Agency Authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda. Your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Henen, did you have any comments?
Speaker Card?
No. You're a big dog. Come on down.
Very small circle. Just wanted to address the city council, address the mayor, and want to echo our support from the building trades.
That you've selected one heck of a deputy mayor of economic development. Mr. Gomez, Deputy Mayor Gomez represents very forward-thinking and very aggressive business that they're going to do good things in your city. Some of the ideas that they've developed together, I hope he brings to the city of Lancaster and all the residents of the city benefit. So just want to echo support, mayor, council members, planning commission, want to just echo our support. Congratulations, Dave.
Thank you, Chris. He's already brought good stuff. Thank you. Don Cuchell?
How are you? Pleasure seeing you again, Council. Thank you very much for giving me a couple of minutes. I'm the founder and president of the Animal Valley Audubon, and we founded this, the organization a couple of years ago. And I'm here in frustration. We've been doing a lot of things for the city in and around. This year, we've saved twenty-nine species from being killed, and we've saved swans and geese from Apollo Park. We've taken fish lines off their wings. We've taken a couple in for surgery. These are the kind of things that we've been doing. We're planning programs to go into the school to teach conservation, wildlife preservation, and we're very heavily involved with our solar power systems through California Audubon. We have representatives in that every meeting. So, and my frustration is, when we have a guest speaker come in, it's for the purpose of teaching and learning. And the majority of these people, we pay. And when they come in and we can't get into the LZ Center, we have to go out and cold and hold meetings, or the equipment is not there that we need, I find that very frustrating and most of all, embarrassing. And frustration, I do not know where to go. I've gone to Parks and Recreation, I had a meeting with a Parks and Rec director a week ago Monday. The following day, they did not have the equipment there for us, after they promised they would do it. Now, I just do not know where to go from here.
We'll fix it.
We want to be a part of the city, we want to work with the city, and we're going to help develop the city.
Macy, could you...
I was going to fix it.
Macy, can you raise your hand? If you'll talk with him right behind you. At AVTA, they have a community room. They'd be glad to give it to you.
Well, I appreciate it.
They'd be glad to let you use it.
We want to develop that acreage for the purpose of training and teaching our school and our children.
Well, you'd say multi-jurisdiction, so Palmdale, the county, and Lancaster all collectively own it, so you guys can use it, and I think it'd be a good use for the building. Just make sure that Macy's aware of it, and he'll take care of you.
Because I'm going to Sacramento next week to lobby for development of these programs, so. Thank you very much.
This is an easy fix. You just have to let us know, you know?
That's what I'm doing.
I know. I kind of wish you'd call staff and let them know first, but...
They don't return the calls. I called and called and called.
They will...
Parks and Recreation, they don't return the calls.
Okay, okay, this is what I want you to do. This is what I want you to do. If there's a problem, I want you to call Jeff at Parks and Rec, all right? And he'll coordinate this. I actually think you guys perform a valuable service, and sometimes, you know, the bureaucracy, things get moved around. You know, another thing that I might want to think about is, I was up at the AVEC building. Wow, I've never seen a view like that. I mean, it'd be perfect for you guys, because it's the entire Animal Valley. There's a lot of facilities we have that could be made available. Wouldn't you, ah... And if Jeff isn't... Wouldn't you, ah, and if Jeff isn't around, call Dave. He knows all these guys, all right?
And another thing, we, we've hauled out thousands, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pounds of trash in that 21 acres that we just recently bought.
You're gonna love it, you just gotta call the right people. All right? And if none of them help you, call me. All right? Evelyn will give you my number. But please, only do it if you need to, 'cause there's a thousand messages every day, it's terrible, okay? David Paul, come on down. He did so well the last time, right?
He did.
Right. You can have four minutes.
Thank you, sir, I won't take that long. I, I just wanted to say that, um, let you all know how much I appreciate being able to come here. These are tough times for many reasons for a lot of people. Our, our world is getting stretched and changed, and, and they're hard times, and, um, the things I see at these various meetings of our community working together just, uh, bring me great peace to know that we're working on it. And I hope everybody feels that accomplishment, because no matter how hard these problems are, we're working on them, and that's what counts. Uh, I look for the little things. I, I just wanted to share with you, the other day, I'm too cheap to, um, buy new windshield wipers. I bought some last year that screech every time they go over my window. So I finally broke down in the rain and I got new windshield wipers, and they just are so soft and quiet. And, and that kind of stuff brings me joy. But, um, to see some of these other programs that go on here, and, um, you know, I have just been an admirer of Deputy Mayor Lisa Rodriguez for many years, combating this sex trafficking and all the things that go on, helping people, and, uh, all the other great things. I know that this gentleman with the Audubon Society is gonna be taken care of, and, uh, we work through these things, and it's just a great joy to participate in these meetings and in this community, and I thank you all for giving me that honor.
Thank you, David. Fran, last but not least.
Good evening again, thank you very much for listening to me. I wanted to say thank you also to, uh, I guess it's Public Works on the sewer system, because I live on Jackman, and the, in the past, uh, sewers have overrun with water. But this year, since we've been having all this rain, they're running very smooth. No water is coming out anymore, so I wanted to say thank you for that. The Board of Trade, I was very lucky, thanks to Mr. Macy, to attend the trade, and it was very informative, I got a lot out of it. More people should try and attend them. It just, I didn't have all the, the scheduling right, I wanted to listen to what, I think her name was Denise, the last speaker, but my access came too soon, so I didn't get to see her, hear her. But, uh, I did get a lot, but out of that, I was, I was asked to, I'm gonna be going to the, uh, the, let's see, the Transportation, North, was it Northeast, North Transportation Coalition?
N C T C.
Yeah, okay, that, what he said. In Santa Clarita in April. Also, I am also on the committee, and I'm gonna do a little plug here for, it's for a good cause. It's a nonprofit, I, I think I mentioned before, I belong to the group for, to open up the Little, Little Rock Dam. And this coming Sunday is that we have donated can to open the dam. Now, it's Sunday at the Five Points of, what is it, Saltmeat? It's gonna be from 8:00 A.M. to 2:00, we're gonna have prizes, we've got music, and if you bring a bag of, of cans, you'll get into the Saltmeat Free. And I hope everybody joins us, so we can make a little more money to help clean up the dams. Not only just Little Rock, we're not only working on Little Rock, we're working on a lot of other recreational parks up in the, in the mountains. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Fran. Okay. Any other comments from the council? Jim, do you have anything?
The comment was made tonight regarding, taking up the issue of a conditional use permit, uh, for motels and hotels. We'll agendize that at our upcoming planning commission and, uh, probably have a recommendation back to the city council on a revised ordinance.
Terrific. You know, it's been, been my experience that you can accomplish a lot in a 10-minute training session, right? If you go much further than that, they don't do it. They say they did it, but they don't do it, right? So, we wanna, wanna figure an optimum time, amount of time these things take, with the idea that they actually, I mean, how hard is it, you know? When she looks 12, she probably is 12, right?
Well, when you read, and I took the time to read the, the literature and the Department of Homeland Security information, and, I mean, it's very straightforward, and it's not a whole lot different than what we condition other projects for alcohol beverage sales, for instance, and the required training. I mean, it's just, it's appropriate.
You know, when, whenever we were out of the country, they always want the kids passports. I mean, I don't know that maybe we shouldn't have an ordinance that they have to show I D. for everyone. You know? For what it's worth. All right. I mean, just having to show the I D. would probably put an end to most of it, wouldn't it? Okay. Anything else? Dave? You got your speech ready? You know, we set aside about 20 minutes for this.
Uh, just a few, I'm a man of few words. Um, I do want to say something, I want to thank everybody, um, that, at this challenge. I also want to thank my wife, and my kids, and my granddaughter, because they're the ones that have to put up with me after the meeting, and, uh, that's Kathy McLaren, uh, Barbara McLaren, my daughter. My granddaughter Kennedy, very proud of, and then my other daughter Samantha. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dave. You know what people don't know, is a month ago, Dave, we didn't think Dave was gonna be here. And two weeks later, he's in a meeting that I'm at. It was quite remarkable. Your, your commitment to this community is, I, I, I just don't see that, and it's, it's appreciated. Thank you. Okay.
We do not have closed session.
What?
We do not have closed session tonight.
We don't?
We do not.
God is good, isn't he?
Indeed.
Well, he is.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
Okay. We are adjourning tonight's meeting in memory of David Eugene Wilson, beloved husband, wonderful father, and loving grandfather. Drafted in the military after high school, Dave served in the United States Army 101st Airborne Division in Trang, Vietnam. He spent most of his professional career as a structural aircraft mechanic for Lockheed and Boeing Aircraft, and retired in 2007. Dave Eugene Wilson will be missed by his family and friends and the community in the city of Lancaster. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, at 5:00 P.M. Carol, I'm coming home.